Good evening, Bridgeport. Thank you for coming out today. This is Tuesday, our November 26 meeting. It is 7:39. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge a flag. Thank you, everyone. Angela, roll call, please.
Laura Houck.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil. Sabah Al-Zayed.
I am here, and Mr. Heil, let us know ahead of time that he would not be attending today.
Madam President, I note for the record, we ran executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:35 with regard to personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I had some thoughts kind of leading up to today. You know, Mr. Bello and I were sharing some stories back and forth, and I think something that's really exciting and something I'm really looking forward to today is honoring Mr. Nick Rotundo. You know, when you grow up and you're a kid, your parents always tell you to be good and do good and just kind of be a good person. And I think we all aspire to be that. But as I've kind of gotten older, I've realized that being neutral is more kind of what's normal and kind of being passive about things and making sure that you don't cause a lot of waves. And being good often is really hard, really difficult. It's very awkward, especially making lasting change. You know, if you're donating some money or dropping off some clothes, you know, that's a little bit easier. But I think if you're making change at the scale that Mr. Nick Rotundo has made, so much so that I've never met him and have heard countless stories about him and have met people that have had their lives changed by him, really something inspiring, something that really I look forward to being just a bit of, at least if I can attain some of it in my lifetime. And, you know, we all felt that it was really important to keep his memory in history in Bridgeport. I'd like it to be where, and we would all like to be where every year his memory resurfaces on the day that we honor him, and his story is then written, and people can read it over and over and over long after we're all gone. And hopefully, it encourages all of us to kind of be the same, or at least try to be. So with that being said, we have a proclamation honoring Mr. Nick Rotundo. I have a quick tribute that I'd like to read that Mr. Bello helped write for us. "Bridgeport lost one of its greatest on November 1, 2024. Nicholas J. Rotundo Sr., or Mr. Rotundo, or Nick, or as most called him Chief, was synonymous with Bridgeport, with the borough of Bridgeport, a community he served and loved for a lifetime. Like many in his generation, Nick came from an immigrant family and was a proud Italian-American who loved his church, Our Lady Mount Carmel, Mark Carmel, sorry, Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church, the Festival Grande Bridgeport Park and Recreations, and the children of Bridgeport of all ages. His complete dedication to each made him a fixture for generations who had the good fortune to grow up in a beautiful little town. Nick was Bridgeport Park and, sorry, Nick was Bridgeport Park and Recreations. He was a one-man army, fighting for the best for his community. Activities for his residents and opportunities for everyone. As one of his very best friends said, 'He was inclusive before it became a buzzword, ensuring that everyone had an opportunity to participate.'" It would be impossible to list the activities he provided to the community, but it would be, but it would be nice to kind of include the following, as Mr. Bello listed, Bridgeport Men's Softball League, Bridgeport Little League, Bridgeport Teenage Baseball, Bridgeport's Legion Baseball, Bridgeport Minor League, Bridgeport Girls and Women's Softball, Saturday Morning Football Programs, Saturday Morning Basketball Programs, Junior and Senior Bridgeport Softball, Kickball, Street Hockey." As you can see, I'm running out of breath reading all of the different things that he has done, and on and on and on. And I think, most importantly, creating the Bridgeport Hall of Fame, which is something that is fantastic and still helped run by Mr. Bennett here that's in the audience for us today. So just fantastic work. Nick was a special education teacher for 40 years, and these are some of the stories that I've actually heard of as well that are just really fun and great and nice to hear. He was recognized throughout the area as one of the best in his field. While he taught in the Norristown School District, he held prom for his students in Bridgeport every year. He changed lives on a daily basis. His students adored him and loved him, often calling him Chief. Nick was a teacher who wanted to teach others. He was a gentleman who taught all who knew him to be gentle people. He was a leader who mentored generations to lead. Nick could be being authoritative, but his smile would always break through. The truth is, he was so well-represented, he did not need to say anything twice, and well-respected." Finally, a few quotes from Nick that made countless Bridgeportian smile. "When you're done doing those 25 chores, if you still have time, police the area. It never rains on Bridgeport Memorial Park, and I love Bridgeport. And Bridgeport loves you, Nick. Nick Rotundo is quintessentially Bridgeport. He will be missed, but his legacy is natively enetched in those who knew him and within the proud history of this town." Thank you, Mr. Bello, for that beautiful tribute. Onto the proclamation. Whereas, so we have the proclamation here for Nicholas Chief Rotundo, for Rotundo Day. Whereas Nicholas J. Rotundo Sr., the chief to many, was born on May 2, 1939, and passed from this life on November 1, 2024. Whereas Mr. Rotundo was a leader, role model, and teacher to generations in the borough, whereas Mr. Rotundo was instrumental in forming or advancing the following activities for borough residents of all ages. Bridgeport's Men's Softball League, Bridgeport's Little League, Bridgeport's Teenage Baseball, Bridgeport's Legion Baseball, Bridgeport's Minor League, Bridgeport's Girls and Women's Softball, Saturday Morning Football Program, Saturday Morning Basketball Program, Junior and Senior Bridgeport Softball, Kickball, Street Hockey, Tennis, Summer Programs, Arts and Crafts, NOK Knock Hockey, Spear and Sips, Wadding Pools, Swing, Seesaws, Merry Grouns, Spring Rides, Sliding Boards, Day Trips, Movies, Guest Speakers of All Kinds, and Something Special Every Day, and the creation of the Bridgeport Hall of Fame. Whereas Mr. Rotundo was a tireless teacher and leader in the field of special education for 40 years, and whereas Mr. Rotundo loved the borough almost as much as the community loved and respected him. Now, therefore, we, the Bridgeport Council for the Borough of Bridgeport, do hereby recognize and congratulate Mr. Rotundo for his lifetime of leadership, teaching and positivity within the borough, and hereby declare May 2, 2025, as Nicholas J. Rotundo Day in his honor. May he rest in peace. In testimony and witness whereof, I have set my hand and affixed the official seal of the Borough of Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, to be affixed as of this 26th day of November 2024." Family would like to come up, and we can hand this over to you?
Madam President, may I just, just one comment?
You can.
The Rotundo family, Nick Jr., you know, I moved here 10 years ago, and you and your family were some of the first folks of the established families in town that I, that I met and encouraged me to get involved in civic organizations and encouraged me to run for council. You know, you obviously learned it from somewhere, that positive spirit. So thanks for that, and you're clearly an honor to your dad and your family. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. What a cool shirt. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Could I, picture? Oh, I mean, with, I'll take the picture with the President. Thank you. Not paying for explicit. Beautiful. Thank you for your time, everybody. Really appreciate that.
Thank you for coming out. All right, next up, we have our oath ceremony for Robert Onnick. I'm sorry. Apologies about that. I got ahead of myself. If you were here for the tribute, then you're welcome to, for the rest of the meeting. But if you would like to exit, you're also welcome to, and we won't feel offended. But we can move on to our council consideration for our November 12, 2024, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Shank, a second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now for the more exciting part. We have our oath ceremony for Mr. Robert Onnick, Bridgeport Auxiliary Fire Police. Do we?
I believe, does the, do you guys have the oath? All right, beautiful.
All yours.
Then I would invite the mayor and Mr. Onnick to the podium.
Invite to the podium. Please come on up. Thank you.
Mr. Truman, going to give a couple pieces of information?
Yes, please.
So, Mr. Robert Onnick is 29 years old. He's a Pennsylvania Army National Guard E-4 Specialist. He graduated from Council Rock High School in 2008 and from Westchester University with a master's in human resources. So he works for the University of Arkansas and worked for the University of Alaska. So interesting group. So he's, he's one of our newest residents in the newest section of Bridgeport. So great thing to see new people get involved and volunteer. So thank you.
Repeat after me, please. I, Robert Onnick.
I, Robert Onnick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Mind if I get a picture with you, three? Come on up. That's all right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you. Is that here Council Rock?
Yes, sir.
I won't hold it against you.
Oh, boy. Blessing by choice.
Welcome aboard, bud.
Because see if we can get hooked up for Saturday. Get you hooked up another crossbar.
Congratulations again. Thank you. You're definitely welcome to stick around for a hefty meeting that's coming up, but if you would like to go home and relax, we also understand.
Thanks so much, man. Congratulations.
All righty. So first here we have for council consideration, Resolution 202441, establishing 2024, sorry, 2025, Bridgeport Borough Office Holidays. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Shank, second from Ms. Gundrum. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, for council consideration, Resolution 202442, establishing 2025 Bridgeport Borough Council Meeting Dates.
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Houck, second from Ms. Hi. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You know, I was trying to make it slower than the first meeting I had, but you guys are making it very difficult. For council consideration, we have Resolution 202444, establishing 2025, the 43, okay, sorry, cross that one out. For council consideration, Resolution 202443, establishing 2025 Bridgeport Borough Finance Committee Meeting Dates. Do we have any questions? Sorry, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, second from Ms. Houck. Have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, for council consideration, Resolution 202444, establishing 2025 Bridgeport Borough Small Business and Economic Development Committee Meeting Dates. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Shank, second from Mr. Hi. Ms. Hi, do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? I actually have a question. These moved, and the dates of these moved with Mr. Ray, and they're now during the day and during the week days. Was he consulted in any of these conversations, or is this going to be a separate meeting?
We can...
Do you just go with?
Well, let's, let's, let's go with these, and we can, we can discuss.
Not to complicate things.
At a later date.
Okay, that sounds good. I just know that they changed their dates, so I wasn't sure if it still kind of coincided. Okay. Do we have any additional questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, behalf of council consideration, Resolution 202445, establishing 2025 Bridgeport Borough Community Events Committee Meeting Dates. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Nolan, second from Ms. Houck. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, for council consideration, we have authorization to execute a change order number one for TD Construction FEMA HMGP Demolition Project. Do you have a motion?
Keith, do you want to give some background on that, or?
Sure, just, just to inform the audience, the, the change order involves the addition of the demolition of 108, 110, 112 West Front Street and 101 West Second Street into the original bid that was awarded to Davis Construction, but originally did not have these properties included because we didn't have clarity as to whether or not the borough was going to move forward with acquiring these. So once we did, we needed to amend the original project, and that is what this change order is memorializing.
I'll second.
Motion, motion from Ms. Gundrum, second from Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, for council consideration, we have authorization to pay the borough funded estimate number one to deconstruction at $29,700, demolition of 137 West Third Street.
And just real quick, this is the, as you had mentioned right there, President Al-Zayed, this is the cost to demolish 137 West Third Street, which was purchased separately from the FEMA grant monies with borough, you know, borough private funds. And therefore, we need to make sure we don't co-mingle any of those expenses in with the rest of the FEMA grant projects. So we're awarding this, or paying this estimate separately and not lumping it into the rest of the, the payment estimate, which is going to be the next thing on the agenda for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Houck, second from Mr. Shank. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, for council consideration, we have authorization to pay FEMA estimate number two to deconstruction $144,000, FEMA HMGP Demolition Project. Assuming something similar, Mr. Truman?
And this is for the, this is for the, a portion of the demolition project costs that were originally bitted out in the, bid out in the initial bid package.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Gundrum, second from Mr. Shank. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, for council consideration, we have a disabled parking space application for 316 Holstein, Holstein Street. Mr. Truman, do you want to give us the recommendation before we move on?
Sure. Members of council, in your packets, you will see a memorandum dated November 21, 2024, from the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee, well, from, from myself as a representative of the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee. The applicant, whose address is 316 Holstein, applied back in August for a disabled space. After pretty thorough review and speaking with both myself and Traffic Safety Officer Bailey, meeting and speaking with the applicant, the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee recommends that council approves this request.
Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to go along with that recommendation and approve the request.
I'll second.
You have a motion from Mr. Shank, second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Next up, behalf of council consideration, Resolution 202446, executing the renewal of employment agreement with Chief of Police. We're very excited that we have you with us. I'm very excited to renew your, your contract and hope that you're here for a long time.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you, Chief. Do we?
That, that chief over there? That one?
We love chief.
I'll, I'll make a motion to execute that renewal.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Shank, a second from Ms. Houck. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? We're not even going to make him, like, sweat a little bit? We're just going to, like... I don't know, he gave us a lot of candy on Halloween, so...
You have two years for that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, for council consideration, we have Resolution 202447, authorizing application to the LSA grant program.
Just, excuse me, just for the enlightenment of the audience and members of council, this LSA grant, this is the, when, when Pennsylvania introduced gambling, whether it's online gambling or casinos, and made that legal, the portion of the tax monies that, that come from the, the gambling industry in Pennsylvania get put into a statewide grant pool, and it's known as the, the local share, local share assessment grant, or LSA. We are applying this year for $546,000 is the grand total requested amount, and this would be for improvements and upgrades to the playground equipment as well as the parking lot at Memorial Park.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Gundrum, second from Ms. Houck. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, for council consideration, we have Resolution 202448, authorizing participation of Bridgeport Borough in the Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Yeah, maybe just for the, the benefit of the public.
Sure. Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust is one of the largest insurance trusts in the region. We have, Bridgeport has long been a member of the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust. They have two other trusts, Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust and the Property and Liability Trust. The, we are already a member of Keystone Municipal Insurance Trust, or KMIT, which is probably, you know, 1 or 1A right behind Divot in terms of municipal and school district-oriented insurance trusts in the state. Like I said, for a long time, we've been part of the Health Insurance Trust. For many years, our workers' comp experience score was too high for Delaware Valley to consider granting us entry into the Workers' Comp Trust. However, over the last handful of years, we've been very fortuitous in trying to, trying to implement better safety in the workplace, performing routine safety inspections at all of our facilities. And, you know, just pure dumb luck, frankly. People have not gotten into some of the, the big-ticket workplace injuries that they had in the, the preceding years. The benefit of joining this Delaware Valley Trust, in addition to the Health Insurance Trust, is the multi-fund discount that we receive. Not only will joining Delaware Valley Workers' Comp Trust reap us a lower premium next year for our workers' comp premium, but we also will receive a, I believe, a 2% or 3% discount on not only our workers' comp premium, but our health insurance premium for being in multiple trusts. Ultimately, the goal is to also apply for the Property and Liability Trust next year when our current policy, property and liability policy expires in, I believe, March, on March 31st. And then at that point, we would get an additional multitrust discount for that as well. So this is all good news for the borough.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. I think this is also a testament to how great our staff is and just like the amount of commitment that they have. I know that Angela and Keith have worked for years to kind of get, get us to the point where we could be here. I think most of us don't even know the details of what this would entail. So thank you for, you know, always putting Bridgeport first and always taking the time to even make these small changes that have huge effects on the borough. So we want to thank you for, for that, for sure. Do we have a, a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. So we had motions from Ms. Nolan and Ms... All right, do you have any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next we have our presentation for our 2025 budget for our liquid fuels and capital fund. Take it away, Mr. Truman.
All right, thank you, President Al-Zayed, members of council, audience members. I will make this quick since I tortured you enough last meeting. The, you know, last meeting, we ran through our, our two largest funds in terms of, you know, activity, operations, and money. The General Fund and the Sewer Fund are clearly our two largest operating funds where, where most of the borough's business gets paid, or where we receive and, and put out the, the most money. Today, these are two smaller funds that nonetheless still should be given attention during the budget season. Number one is the Liquid Fuels Fund. The Liquid Fuel, Liquid Fuels Fund is, you know, by far the smallest fund or portion of the budget. This is, this money that we receive, the... This is, this money that we receive, the revenues we receive annually, it's comprised entirely of annual state-awarded money that every municipality receives based on the number of road miles you have within the municipality. Our 2025 estimate is $117,296 that we should receive next year and that's always off by 5,000 or 10,000. For example, in 2024, they estimated we were going to get $108,000, but we actually ended up getting $119,000. So, it was $11,000 more than we had originally anticipated. So, next year, we're looking at 117,296. This money can only be used on street-related maintenance and expenses, for example, you know, streetlights, traffic signals, snow removal, vehicle and equipment repairs and purchases. However, only vehicles and equipment, equipment that specifically work on road-related, road-related projects. So, if it's something that we take off-road or go into the park to perform maintenance and work on, not eligible. Currently, we have reserves in this account of $274,000, which is helpful in the event of future bad winters, sinkhole repairs and future vehicle purchases. You know, the majority of this money is historically goes towards streetlight and traffic signal repair and electricity bills and the purchase of snow removal, whether it's salt or buying new salt spreaders or buying new plows. Obviously, we've had very mild winters over the last several years. Salt is expensive and you can see 200, raising, being able to squirrel away 274 grand over the last few years, that is directly relating to the fact that we have not had to spend that money on salt. So, it's good to have a little bit of surplus in there and that's really about the long and short of it when it comes to the Liquid Fuels Fund. Nothing terribly exciting. I'm sure many of you would argue that there's nothing terribly exciting about anything in the budget, but, you know, that's a story for another day. Moving on to the capital fund, members of council already went through and the capital budget requests were presented to council several meetings ago. Just as a brief recap, I wanted to run through one last time what expenses are being included in the 2025 capital budget. Number one, street-related expenses come in at $675,000. This projects and assumes that we complete two block grant projects, community development block grant or CDBG projects next year. One is the street restoration project that we had earmarked for 2024. Unfortunately, just due to timing and getting authorization from the county who oversees this grant, we ran up against the winter and when asphalt mills start to close up and when it, you know, the colder it gets, the less advisable it becomes to lay asphalt. So, we've decided to defer, defer this project that we were going to do this year to early next year. As soon as, as soon as winter and the cold weather breaks, we have the bid package ready to rock and roll and we'll get, we'll get an early jump on that next year. Additionally, there's another block grant project that we have $200,000 in county funding awaiting us on. That is the, this was going to be, this is going to be to replace multiple inlet and ADA handicap ramps throughout the borough. Again, that's budgeted at a $300,000 project. And then finally, we have the Borough Line Road, Borough Line Road Culvert Project and we have a design cost estimate on that project for, in the amount of $75,000. Next up, we have the Fire Department, $82,500 grand total. Then, what constitutes that grant, that amount is a purchase of a new boat trailer, which comes in at $20,000. The old boat, the old boat trailer would either be traded in and used as equity towards the purchase of the new one or we sell it, we sell the old trailer and those proceeds go towards, again, the purchase of this new boat trailer. Additionally, we are looking at engaging a consultant next year to come in and perform an analysis of the two fire companies. We have that project estimated with a ticket of $35,000. The police, or excuse me, the Fire Department has also requested the acquisition of thermal cameras to aid them in their, in their, in their rescue and recovery operations. That comes in at $12,000 and the acquisition of an industrial uniform washer and dryer at $15,000, which would greatly help them in terms of efficiency. Obviously, you know, they're a volunteer group as it is. They're using a couple of old May tags right now and they can only do one uniform at a time. This would enable them to, and, you know, you've all seen a firefighter's uniform, they are, you know, head-to-toe body suits, very thick, dense, obviously flame retardant material, very burdensome on your standard commercial or residential washer dryer system. This would expedite the job and just keep the volunteers out of there doing mundane things like washing linens rather than actually, you know, fighting fires. I would recommend that, you know, we, we would proceed with this acquisition. So, Fire Department, $82,500. Sewer Department comes in at $153,000. This is the primary trickling filter rebuild that council has already considered and authorized. We are waiting for, waiting for the manufacturer to come out and, and tear the old one down and once they get the parts, they'll, they'll start the rebuild. I believe we're about 12 to 14 weeks out on that, however. Number four, these fall into the category of general or administrative expenses for lack of better home. One is the LED sign project that we are still working with the DCED to, to get final authorization to greenlight our contractor. That's coming in at $50,000, which is fully covered with a grant. And then, we've earmarked a million dollars in next year's capital fund budget for potential additional property acquisitions. And then finally, we have police expenses, capital expenses coming in at 50,000 next year. And this is comprised of a new license plate reader, two new evolus radar signs, a civilian vehicle and, at $15,000, and other assorted equipment such as vests and body worn cameras, totaling $11,000, which is where we, how we get to the 50,000. The total capital fund budget, as it currently stands for 2025, comes in at $2,010,050. Are there any questions from council on this, what was, what's been presented this evening or anything that we discussed at last meeting regarding the general or sewer funds?
Maybe not a very specific question today, but I saw that there's a lot of different things like cameras and different equipment. We're safe to assume that everything is, like, training is available for everything, so like, that our volunteers have adequate training to using some of these things and access if they need it.
I think that's a safe assumption, President, yes.
Great.
Well, if there are no further questions, and I'm certainly not trying to steal council or President Alzada's thunder, but council wanted to consider authorizing advertisement of the 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Do we have a motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Schenk, second from Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions or comments from council of the public on the budget in general? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to advertise the budget for 2025 carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last up here, we have for council consideration, authorization of bills and salaries for November 2024.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion from Ms. Gendrum, second from Ms. Hyde. Do you have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, we can move on to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business anybody would like to share? Seeing there is none, we can move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports we'd like to share? All right, we can certainly move on to Mayor's report. Mayor Jackson, tell you.
Thank you. First, I would like to wish everyone in Bridgeport and beyond a happy Thanksgiving. This family favorite holiday is coming right up and I hope everyone is able to celebrate with loved ones. I'm excited and thankful to be part of this welcoming community and I'm looking forward to another year of Bridgeport excitement. And since it's that time of year, also remember that the festive lights ceremony and the holiday shopping village will be taking over Borough Hall this Saturday, November 30th. The shopping village will be in Borough Hall parking lot from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. and there's going to be an activity tent for kids and a visit with the Grinch from 4:30 to 6:30, which is very exciting. And the festive lights ceremony will be at Fourth and Mill Street beginning at 5:30 p.m., where you can enjoy live music, hot chocolate, a visit with Santa and the annual fireworks show. I believe Santa will also be making some rounds throughout the community on his way to the show stopping event, so be ready for him to drive by your house earlier in the day. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we can move on to Chief's report.
Good evening, Bridgeport. Going along with our holiday events, I want to bring up our yearly, our annual holiday Christmas toy drive. As the holiday season draws near, the Bridgeport Police Department is excited to kick off our annual Christmas toy drive. This cherished initiative brings joy to local families in need and we're reaching out to our community businesses like yours and our residents to make this year's drive a continued success. Each year, our toy, our toy drive provides toys, clothing and special gifts to children from low-income families to ensure they experience the magic of Christmas. With the generous contributions from community supporters, we make holiday dreams come true for kids of all ages. You can check out the article that was, we posted, 2023 Toy Drive, but if you do have a willingness to want to participate, you can write checks payable to the Borough Bridgeport and deliver it to the police station at 65 West Fourth Street with the line item of holiday, holiday toy drive. Thank you for that. We will be making the purchases on December 17th at our local Target store. If you have any questions with regard to the program, please reach out to Officer Matt Stead, M.S.T.E.A.D., for mattstead@bridgeportpd.com or just call the police department. So, thank you for that. Most recently, we've participated in a turkey trot up at Bridgeport Elementary School. So, a couple of our officers were up there just the other day assisting with the school officials and all the kids having a great time as they go into their, their holiday season. Officer Matt Stead and I visited Mission Kids Plymouth Road Plymouth meeting. It's a great new facility that's going to assist with the investigation of child abuse cases countywide. It's three times the footprint. It could actually conduct three juvenile child abuse investigations and interviews at the same time. It's a horrible thing to think that we need to do those kind of things, but our county's stepping up and adding the resources to make sure that we do do that. Just recently, some trends, we've had, we've had six to eight retail thefts from the, from the Wawa, a couple DUIs. As far as a crime trend, I guess this one person didn't get the message that the Kia's were really not able to be stolen so well anymore. And on the 600 block of Grove Street on the 24th, someone attempted to steal a Kia and was not successful. But there were some broken windows that were taken care of. If you do happen to see anyone in your neighborhood pulling on handles for cars, that's technically one of the elements of a crime of a theft from a motor vehicle. Call us, we will be there and we'll take care of what we need to take care of there. Just the other thing is, thank you for Borough Council. We are making sure that our police officers are well-trained and besides the West Point Command and Leadership Academy for two sergeants, I have three officers go into a supervisory instructional course coming up, baton and defensive tactics and handcuffing instructor courses. We have homicide by-vehicle collision course and on-scene accident collision course for all of our officers. So, we're just trying to raise our competencies across the board. Thank you for giving us the money and training so that we could better serve the residents of Bridgeport. Thank you very much.
Great to hear about all the trainings, Chief. Thank you for that update. And I think the toy drive every year is wonderful. You guys get so many volunteers and Target is full of Bridgeport Terrians. So, a very fun day. I'll be there and hope to see the community kind of contribute however they can, whenever they can. So, thank you for that effort. All right, we can move on to new business. Do we have any items of new business we'd like to discuss today? All right, seeing as none, we have open forum and announcements. Do we have any announcements today? All right, we can move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment this evening? All right, you guys lasted a pretty long meeting, so thank you for coming out. All right, we can certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
All right, it is 8:25. Thanks for coming out, everyone, may adjourn.